I instantly just.
Oh, please do. Can you perjure thy heart until the last.
I'm gonna say a soulless.
Right? He pointed us up and I'm like, no.
Big one's there.
There's no need to offer credit. We can go lead pages or something.
And then she goes, I love like this. I went up to my foot's far.
Yeah, I can do that.
I mean, I don't have a done that. I use a lot of brands.
Well, I'll tell you what, you may do that. You do that.
Hey, how's it going?
Brandon?
Not too bad. Hello.
How are you?
I'm good, so.
That's good.
Was, uh.
Police system.
About about ready for this to stop on Friday?
I think so.
They're staying where everybody that was.
You might just go get the door, John. It's time to close.
Hi, John.
Over there, are we, are we, are we going to the closed session?
Well, don't we close the door?
No.
No.
Good thing you left that open.
Yeah, I must've missed something. Close session.
No, I thought they closed it. I don't even see out there.
Where? Yo is watching a dog.
I mean, check that out. Where's the dog?
Well, that's that part in front there.
Only only closed for closed session time.
Well, let's put a sign up front there saying for Mike's party.
For Lillard. I think that's great. I second that.
I can't make moves, sorry. And if anybody else does, I'm gonna smack him. I thought I finally did it. He's got veto power. Tell me an order made here. Mike, President, Rick here, John here, Sarah.
Here.
Would you believe this?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any, uh, motion for the consent agenda?
Motion.
Got motion and second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both. Public input. The time plays for anything that's not on agenda. Discuss a term of each. Discussion possible action in reference to approving M O U with silos and smoke stacks.
So if you recall, um, during previous council meetings, Becky and Ann had both brought up, uh, the program of silos and smoke stacks. Um, we met Drayton, I, the tree board members, Steve McNamee. We all met with Candy Streets from Silos and Smoke Stacks. She talked about this process going over. Um, there's lots of benefits to it. Um, one big thing is it'd be creating a partnership with them. That opens the doors to more funding opportunities for projects that we have over there. Um, in this M O U, you can see the, um, list of items that, um, that are a part of this. Um, the one, probably the best thing about all this is, one, it's free. And two, um, it's not binding to anything. So at any time, we can alter it, change it. Um, we can choose to get out of it. But, um, this is kind of the first steps, um, to becoming an emergency site. And this will be over for the, uh, nature park. And I think Becky and Ann are both on tonight and.
Yeah.
Did I miss anything?
Um, not really. It's, you know, it's just basically, um, one step in, in the long process of planning out this park. And it's, and, um, it would eventually become a, a national heritage area. And so that connects it with all kinds of other national heritage areas. And, um, they would help a lot with, um, with us developing it and figuring out what we want to do with it and what's possible to do with it. And would also connect us with other, other organizations within their organization that what we were from. And I think it would be a real good thing for us to do. It would also give us national coverage. We could be on their maps and all their information, too.
And I would just add that, um, this project is, um, a collaboration that involves the Lisbon Historic Preservation Commission, the Lisbon History Center, the Tree Board, and the Park and Rec Board. So there's a number of entities, um, that are involved in this project and will work together as a team to try to move that entire project forward, the development of Pleasant Grove Heritage Park.
I, I do have a question. I guess I don't know where this Pleasant Grove Heritage Park name came from. Was that something that was just thrown out there and I, I guess I'm still.
Sorry. Um, we took the original name from the stone that, um, Steve McNamee had at the pond is where the, was where the Pleasant Grove came from. And then we did the heritage park because we were, we were talking about doing a nature park, but then we were going to be doing so much more than just the nature. And then, and then, um, and then talking to silos and smoke stacks and, you know, you know, it's, you know, it's heritage areas. This heritage is, is, is arts and history and nature. And so we put it all under the umbrella of, um, heritage. And we came up with that. We came up with that in one of our, one of our meetings when we were, um, applying for the, for a grant. Happened when we were doing that big grant that Iowa had. And that's where our group came up with that.
Okay.
And I would add, I would add that when the McNamees sold the property to the city, it was sold with the understanding, and this was an understanding between the McNamee family and Connie Meyer, that the park would somehow have the words Pleasant Grove included in it. Because that, because that is the, um, name that the McNamees had attached to the property. And Pleasant Grove apparently is, um, the name of the church, um, in northeast Iowa where Stephen Doris were married. And so it has significant meaning for the family. So if we want to honor the family's legacy and honor the agreement that the family had with Connie, I think Pleasant Grove Heritage Park is an appropriate name.
And, and that's fine. It's just that it's never been brought, we've, we've been hearing that it's been referred to as this park, but it's never ever been brought to the council for any kind of, you know, hey, you think this is like, nothing. We've just been referring, it's just been referred to as this park.
It's called.
That's probably true.
It, it, yeah, it's been just referred to, you know, so that's what I'm wondering is where this came, name came up with, who came up with it? And, I mean, if we're gonna put stuff in this silos and smoke stacks under that name, then I think that we need to make sure that that's the name that we want to keep.
I think that's, I think that's a really good point. I guess we missed a step.
So how, how do we go about that?
But something exciting as that name?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would think that that would, um, fall to Drayton as Park and Rec Director.
Is that something that has to be voted on by council or is it?
Uh, wouldn't hurt if we did, just.
Yeah, we'll make it official.
Yeah.
And I, the question I got is, what further do you see out there?
What do you mean what?
I mean, you got your, your four bars now. You got a gazebo out there. You got a pond. You know, there's gonna be, I think there's a dog park incorporated in that somewhere.
Um, possibly. That was, that was.
Some nat- some natural flower crap stuff, areas.
Right, there's gonna be a fairy plot.
Yeah. So what else do you see more, more incorporated into this?
Um, well, there's, we've looked at doing some kind of like a walking trail of, you know, throughout it, um, maybe some public art in there, um, some, um, some playgrounds, um, kind of natural playgrounds, areas for, for kids. Uh, um, we're talking about doing kind of a wetlands area, um, north of that where the water's gonna be emptying off. And, um.
Sorry for that.
That's all.
No, it was Rick. It wasn't me. Yeah, we go ahead. So, I mean, there's other things that you, be a plan for that.
Right, right. And that's what, yeah, this is all a lot to look at and figure out and kind of filter through it all and see what we want to do, what we can do.
Yeah.
And as that master plan is developed, um, those specific components will be defined in the master plan.
Okay. And then, you know, as far as, you know, what Sarah asked earlier about Pleasant Grove Heritage Park, um, what we'll do is, um, cause we've always, we've always, um, said it was the Myers sign. That's what we always called it. So we'll get it on the, that to change into that name. And then we'll, once it's approved, I mean, that's, all it is is just approve it and name change.
Yeah. Yeah, I haven't thought about that. The way to start calling it better.
Yeah, I understand.
I haven't decided.
Anybody got any questions for Becky or Ann?
Sounds good to me.
If you did, I do a motion to approving M O U with silos and smoke stacks. So, uh, and our motion on second. Bit one on seconds.
I got it.
All, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both. All right, there you go. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Will it be done back Tuesday?
Yeah.
Discussion possible actions in reference to paying warrants that come in after the council meeting prior to June thirtieth, twenty twenty three.
So this is on here every year, uh, to do this. This is just to pay bills that would be absorbed in this year's budget. So we don't, um, I don't, as I mentioned in there, um, I don't know of too many that will come beforehand, but, um, I know that there's one that Historic Preservation has for four signs, those downtown signs. And they're a hundred and a quarter piece. But, um, as long as they fit the budget, um, this is just to approve those.
Your motion to pay the war, our season warrants?
Make a motion.
On second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both. Plus discussion of possible action in reference to approving payment to Bennett painting, Bennett painting and decorating.
So this is, uh, this was actually done a long time ago. These bids came out. Um, this is for the fire escape painting as well as doing the window work as a part of the, uh, phase one of the library, uh, rehab project. And so this is now complete. Um, the main push with this is they leave the library and already received a grant that they had to extend in order to get this done. So it's paramount this gets paid for, um, by the end of June, so that they can still receive the grant money. So the total would be, uh, they're gonna pay a thousand eighty, um, with the remaining funds to the grant funds. And then our proportion would be ninety-three oh two, which if you recall during our talk with the, uh, History Center, um, on the West Wall of History Center, um, this was already approved and planned for, um, in the West Wall of the Library. Those funds are there. Um, we took, remember, we, we borrowed some of that money that was associated with the library to fund the History Center. But I had talked that we needed to keep about ten thousand dollars left in that West Wall fund, uh, for these two projects that they had already had planned. So we just need approval to pay those.
Oh, to approve.
Second. Oops, go ahead.
I wanna see something on this. Um, first of all, yeah, I don't have a problem paying it. The second is whenever these people go out for grants and stuff, unless it's a free grant, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm leaving Brandon then to the example. Brandon goes out and gets a five thousand dollar grant for some new backpacks, plus the city has to pay fifty, or has to match it a hundred percent. So, you know, he comes to me, uh, Sydney, goes, all right, that fellow's a grand. All you guys gotta do is match it. Or he goes, I got this grant, you gotta match it. I think any, any grants that come, that they go out for, if they're the matching number, they should have come before the council and get our approval for, go before that grant.
I agree.
Yeah, I can't remind you all what groups I'm laying this on to, all the fact.
Cause I.
I haven't said for yet.
I'm, I mean, I'm a hundred percent for grants, but I mean, there's some times if they go out to get grants. And then it, all of a sudden, you know, they went out and got a twenty thousand dollar grant and it ended up costing us a hundred thousand. You know?
Yep, I agree.
You know, what's, what's the grant worth on this one? Cause it seems like it's worth maybe a hundred bucks or something like that.
It's a thousand eighty remaining of the five thousand that they received. So they, they kind of split some work up and they're able to still cover some of this work on the remaining funds that they had. So they, they're using a thousand eighty of the five thousand to cover this part of this project, which is the remaining fund.
The city has to pay almost nine times that.
Correct. But that's why that was budgeted. This, this is, keep in mind, this is almost, Becky, has this been a year and a half or two years?
This has been two years. We've gotten two grants to do work on the library. And we, and we do come to you before we apply for, we can talk to you about, because we, we let you know how much the ci- how much we're asking the city to come up with or to use out of the budgets for those buildings.
I, I understand. And I.
Yeah, we're careful about that.
This was actually budgeted for.
Yeah, yeah. We, I remember all this.
It's just a long month.
But I mean, it's just, um, you know, and when we ran into the problems with the History Center, we borrowed from the, I mean, we borrowed from the library. And I remember the ten thousand, keep, Brandon say, let's keep ten thousand because they're not done. So I mean, I'm, I'm not saying to you guys specifically, but I mean, it's just, you know, I got to, I shouldn't say, I said, we gotta look out for the citizen that we're not spending a bunch of money to get a fifteen dollar grant that's gonna cost us sixty thousand.
Right.
Yeah, free money's great, but it's gotta, the, the non-free money's gotta be approved of.
Right.
And I, and you're right, Anna, you guys have come before us with everything I think you've ever asked for.
This is just a lot.
When we do our, when we do our grant applications, we're saying that, you know, that we've, we've done that with the city that we, you know, okay, that with the city, that the city would.
Yeah, but these quotes do match the original quotes, um.
Yes.
From the time that they had to submit these with the grant. So I verified everything matched. The only addition was the four hundred and thirty on the back. Um, the invoice fifty-eight eleven, they had to add one more day of a lift fee. So other than that, these funds are the exact same as they were the day they were submitted.
And I, and I know Mr. Bennett ran into some high controversy with like the storm windows being caulked in instead of just work appropriately easy to remove and.
And they are probably in the next, he gave a timeline of ten to twenty years. We're gonna need to replace them because they're not great. He said he had to be very careful that.
Yeah.
When he brought them down, that they were.
That we glazed some of them.
Yep. And, yeah.
Or, all right, that's just my two cents. We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Both. Resolution nineteen twenty twenty-three to approve end of year twenty-three transfers. Christina, you wanna go with this?
So the first two that you'll see on this, uh, resolution are for the water and water sinking and sewer sinking and sewer fund. Um, the reason that I have down there are certain amounts and then, or the balance as of June thirtieth is because it's an ever-changing number. So that's my balance right now. I can't guarantee that will be my number at June thirtieth, but it will be very close to it if not. Um, emergency levy, we do that one yearly as well. These are just ones to clear out our system so our auditor's happy. Um, and then TIF is paying back the money to the Downtown Reinvestment Fund, which is the twenty grand that we used for the west, or for the History Center wall. And then the Housing Rehab Fund, uh, which that, those projects are now done. And this was the city's portion of those projects over the last few years. So it's just, these are resolution, our transfers making our auditor happy so that all accounts have a positive balance at the end of the year.
Laura, you want to?
Yes.
So we, so we use twenty thousand dollars an hour tip for downtown?
Yes, we do that yearly.
You do that.
And since we use the funds for the History Center, now is the time to do that.
Okay. All right. Your motion?
I make a motion to approve the transfers.
Second?
Second.
Your motion and second, Sarah?
Aye.
Gavin.
Aye.
Rick, Mike?
Aye.
Nate? Aye.
Resolution twenty twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-three to approve salaries for fiscal year twenty-four.
All right, so in front of you are the salaries for everyone. Uh, keep in mind that, um, any contract goes into effect, um, redone for July one, which is a five percent cost of living increase. Um, council in the past has approved that across the board for all city staff. Um, you can choose to not do that. I'm just letting you know that, uh, the only ones that are guaranteed the five percent would be Chris, Ryan, Travis, and Jake. So we can redo this. It's just on here because of how they've done it in the past. Um, again, this is the cost of living increase. Um, fire department sets theirs, uh, the ambulance board sets the ambulance director, and the library boards, um, sets theirs.
Everybody getting questions? Need a motion for the approval of salaries increase?
I make a motion for the salary increase of cost of living.
Your motion on second?
Second. That includes everybody?
Yep. Nate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Here.
All right. Sarah?
Aye.
Gavin.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-one, twenty twenty-three to approve board members.
All right, this is a resolution to approve, um, two members to the library board and six members to the History Center board. Library's expired in twenty twenty-nine and the History Center will be twenty twenty-four.
This is renewing terms for people.
I don't know that this is anybody new. I think all.
All renewals.
Your motion?
Motion to approve the, the board members for both the library and History Center.
On second?
Second.
Mike?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Rick? Sarah?
Aye.
Gavin?
Aye.
Push, Robert? Um, I do not have anything tonight. All right. City engineer, Dave?
Yes, uh, a couple of things. Family Dollar is under construction. Stopped out a couple of times to look over the stormwater part of that. It's under their parking lot to make sure it looks good. They're doing a pretty good job with that. And then on the, uh, water main project, Washington Street, they're working to get that opened and have moved over on Market over towards the park area they were just talking about earlier. They're working, uh, their way west on that. So things are starting to, uh, button up on Washington and, uh, they'll work a little bit on getting restoration done, but signs should be pulled here shortly if they haven't been already, and that'll be open to traffic.
All right, anybody have questions?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Um, when you're going down Market Street and we're coming towards that park we've been talking about?
Yeah.
Um, I've had people concerned asking about if it's going to get close to that, um, concrete fence right there on the corner.
The, kinda like the corner marker there?
Yeah, yeah. It's got like two posts with an angle.
All right. It's my understanding they're in the roadway to there and they're at, they go through where those stumps are, but they know that if they need to remove it, to be careful and to set it aside.
Okay.
But I think they're, I think we're gonna miss it, Becky, to be honest with you.
I think Travis had to pull one and replace it and they've moved or something. It looks like that the crossbar has shifted.
Okay. Yeah, there's, there's a couple of things that we've kept along the way, a couple of trees that we thought maybe we can navigate around of it, then either like the tree roots stuck out too far or we thought we're gonna remove too many of the roots to make the tree die. So then we've had to come back and take it out. Um, but I, I know that that was already been addressed, but I'll remind them.
Okay, great. Thank you.
They'll move it back if they have to, but we're gonna retain it, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause that's, yeah, it's a pretty cool little corner marker.
Yeah.
Yeah. Great, thank you.
Any other thing for Dave?
Um, it's actually that, that gateway, that gate is listed in the National Register uh, domination as a contributing structure to the Myers Farmstead Historic District. So all the more reason to take extra care with handling that.
I think we'll be south of it, but I'll, I'll make sure they know.
I mean, I can, I can say one thing about Becky. They do a heckuva job and they try not to destroy anything they don't have to. So.
Yeah.
And they try to, they try to put stuff back the way it was before they got there. So. Well, we shouldn't put it out there.
It's just if we get, if we get close to it, it'd be smart to just preemptively move it back.
Yeah. I mean, if they gotta dig it up, we'll put it back where it should be. I mean, if we had to put the water main underneath it, we gotta, we gotta look at it. I mean, they're.
Yeah.
It shouldn't be out in the street until you get past down to the bottom and then it jets out into the grass. But. So. I think it'll be all right.
All right. We'll, we'll do our best. We'll make sure it gets back. If it, if it's gone for a little bit, we'll make sure it gets back.
Okay.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Anything else for Dave? Thanks, Dave. Public work.
Um, I, I'll take care of his line.
Bert, you ready?
Uh, just a couple of things. Um, we're wrapping up with T-Ball and Coach Pitch. Intro finished up on Saturday. Um, and then T-Ball, Coach Pitch will be done at the end of this week. Um, I will start registrations for fall soccer and flag football, July tenth. And that'll run until early August and then we'll start the first week of school. Um, other than that, I'm just trying to get all my stuff done this week. I'll be leaving Friday for vacation and I'll be back next Wednesday. So.
Well, have a good vacation.
Uh, I didn't, I started to check tonight for dugout repair, which dugout roof was bad.
Came deconstruction, did it?
Yeah, I have no idea.
That was the.
Three hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Yeah, I think that was the one where the light fell down on the. Oh, was that minefield? Okay, yeah, that makes sense. We had a light that fell.
When they took the lights down.
Okay.
They're pulling it out. It, it's tough.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
All right, it's time to talk about this. Any questions for Jordan? Police department?
He is, uh, not able to do that.
Ambulance director, Jake's here. You got any questions for him? And he wants to talk.
Yeah, I just, I have, uh, our monthly report in there for April. Um, May should be coming out here the next week or so. And then we have our feasibility study, um, our, our space needs analysis in there. And I wanted to make sure I was here to see if you guys had any questions on that or.
So that's that document that's in the packet. And this page here is your, kind of read your digest version of everything that's in the packet.
So if you, when you do get a new building, um, is it gonna be a modern?
So that'll, that'll depend. There's a few different sites we're kind of looking at. There's also the, um, possibility that we'll do kind of a phased addition, uh, which was the initial plan. However, after kind of working through things with the architect, um, basically it came down to we could build a, a new building that's a little bit more efficient, um, for the same, if not probably less, uh, just because of all of the remodel work and everything that would have to go into our current building. So we're kind of working through which process we're gonna go. Obviously, there's some benefits to doing phased work, um, you know, as far as coming up with the capital. However, if we can have a building that we can build today, that's gonna last us for thirty years, uh, for the same cost it's gonna take to remodel our current facility. You know, that may be the reasonable option. We did look at a few different sites and the consultant basically said, you know, our, our biggest leg to getting out the door is the volunteers getting in. So we'll have to be mindful of where it goes, um, where our volunteers are coming from, things like that. So there's, there's a few discussion points there.
However, your volunteers may change from town to town.
Mm-hmm.
Use that premise.
Yeah, and then that's, you know, exactly true. Um, our numbers kind of waver, um, off and on depending on where people are at and things like that. So.
I will tell you that I was on the committee originally on that. And we, Lisbon Bank was going to give S D X. And it wasn't good enough and had to go, it had to go when the Moeburn side. Obviously, it said that.
That was a long years ago, dude.
Yeah, to be honest with you, the, the optimal location, um, for our station plotted about a quarter mile north of our current station. To be honest with you, the, the optimal location for our station plotted about a quarter mile north of our current station based off of drive times and response and ten dot call heat map, as you can see in there. So theoretically, where we're at now is, is the optimal location, which definitely gives us a lot to think about. But, you know, our, our communities are small enough that geographically wherever we move within kind of that central part there, it's gonna be a matter of thirty seconds to a minute. What you're not gonna see is it's not gonna be going somewhere on either extreme of the cities. We're gonna try to stay right in between to the best of our abilities, just because, again, we wanna make sure that, one, people are coming to the station, we're decreasing that time as best as we can.
Any questions for Dave? Thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Bert?
The only thing I have is just a reminder to everybody about fireworks. No fireworks within the city limits can be led and if it gets some rain, just be conscious of dry conditions and what fireworks can do, so. Bye, there.
Anybody get into fire? Two of them sure.
Sports complex update, we have Drake and his crew been watering religiously out the sports complex. If you drive out there, you can really start to see the new grass coming through. Looks pretty good. The rain definitely helped in all the other areas too, so we'll keep at it. I think he's watering twice a day right now, so hopefully we continue to get rain and make it a lot easier. I am scheduling a meeting next week with YTT. I just wanna get this next phase in the forefront and get it, get it rocking and rolling, so probably meet with them next week. City crews spent today out on Highway thirty doing some pot hole patching on the business city. Making that look as good as it can until we can get that overlay done. They were here at city hall, that's where the lift is up front for the windows from the storm damage, so I'm still waiting to get the estimate back from that. Hopefully at the next meeting I'll have that, honey, have to move forward with that. And that, a lot of that is gonna be covered under insurance, it sounds like. Alliance gas line update, they are moving over towards Jackson Street by the park. So from Main Street to Highway thirty, so they're gonna, they're just finished today, just like fifteen minutes ago in North Washington. So they're gonna be moving over that direction. Keep in mind, between Brecky and the Alliance project, all of the dirt work will be done hopefully by the end of next week. There's a lot of it being done as we speak, so just so you know that that'll be put back the way, the way they found it. As for the water rain project, again, like Dave said, they weren't able to get Washington Street open just here this afternoon. There is a couple of areas they're still got waiting for, to do some paving up there at the corner of Third. They'll be coming back with the sidewalk, so it's good to have that back open. Crews are finishing down on Second Avenue today. They're doing tie-ins, so they, that's when they go to tie the old services into the new pipe. When they go through, they make the trench, they lay the pipe in and then they go valve to valve typically if they can. Get that water charge, they have to go three days testing. That trench is open that entire time, so once the testing's done, then they can bore the services and hook up and then fill it back in. So it's a, it's probably a three to five day process depending on where they're at in front of your house. So just keep that in mind as they move through. They did do on School Street, so they are finished there, they're finishing up a couple of valves. They got most of it packed back down and they'll be starting paving over on School Street. They will keep a pipe, upright pipe at the end of School Street because that's where they have to tie into Washington Street when they get that far. We had a pre-con meeting with the school, they're gonna be starting their addition, so we wanted to get School Street done and get out of their way before they started their work. And also, we were gonna kind of do Washington Street, West School Street, but with the issues that we ran into and the issues that we're going to run into downtown, because that's an all-new sidewalk and new intersection, I don't wanna be infringing on sauerkraut days, so we've kind of changed our timetable a little bit on that, so. Currently, there's out here on Market, they're gonna be going down Market Street for the next two weeks to Chestnut and then they'll go all the way down to Iowa and tie in at Iowa that following week. After that, we'll see where Alliance is at. The chances are we'll either be at the park and going down Jackson Street from Main to Park or we'll skip across Highway thirty and do South Jackson and then come back up South Washington to Highway thirty. And then once sauerkraut days is done, we'll get the park done and then Washington to Main. So that's kind of the tentative plan. I would say once we get down Market to the end, we're probably at least halfway, so things have progressed quickly here, hopefully, so that's encouraging.
Two things on that. Washington Street, is all the dirt on it right now?
Yep.
Are they responsible for cleaning that?
That's mainly Alliance gas product, especially if they're at between Third and Fourth, there's a lot. So they, they know that they need to and I'll, actually, I, I went up by there before the meeting tonight and then I came back and they're actually working on some of that now, so, but I'll make sure that they get all that off there because we don't want that going down our storm.
And then they're about done over by the school. What I would like to do is get pictures of when they're done, so when the school, I mean, it happened when they did the rebuild on our big construction project before they tore our stuff up, I think they repaired it, so.
Of our stuff, did you?
I mean, sorry, just want to get documentation that all of our stuff, what we had when it started.
Yep. And I know that Dave was at the meeting with me as well for their pre-con meeting, so if you can work with them to get all the information I need. We've got the tree grant, we planted several of those trees. We hope that we get the rest of them down Washington Street, Second Avenue, so we'll be getting that done. The area where the pond was fixed, so you'll notice that. And also the well at the pond, the farm well that feeds the pond is on a timer now, so that kicks on and off daily. So we've, we've been, with the rain, I'm sure that'll help, but it was starting to drop just like ponds everywhere. So that's going to be in. City Hall sidewalk, that project started with Greg Butcher's concrete. We did find the soft spot underneath the fire department apron two, so we had to core that out. And there was also, I believe it's from the old creamery, but the old foundation, that concrete was sitting on. So we had to dig that out because, and that explains why the concrete was cracking, because some of it was on that foundation and some of it wasn't. So I assume on this side it's gonna be just the same, but we did get the mini hoe on demo in time to have our staff do all that and put that rock in there, so they took care of that. They are gonna start tearing out kind of the sidewalk out in front of city hall, so anybody that's gonna access city hall will need to park in the lot and then walk in on the sidewalk running north. So we'll make sure we get, we always have an entrance one way or the other of sidewalk access, but they'll just have to enter from the parking lot here probably after tomorrow, so. Just reminded everybody, the downtown reinvestment grant is now open with the new funds available. I do have people inquire and I've been talking to people downtown about it, I do have four applications in and out, so I'll be getting them, that process started here shortly. And thanks to all the city staff for help on the bulk item day. Christine, do you have any info on that yet?
I did get a few tickets, so we were here for three hours. It definitely looked like the numbers were way lower. I do think a hazardous event would be beneficial to work with when counting solid waste because we had a lot of batteries and light bulbs wanting to get dropped off and we can't pick those. But I saw the numbers from what the guys said for tonnage and it is probably half of what we had last year, so. And all the electronics just keep getting smaller and smaller, so.
Well, hopefully, I mean, hopefully that's a good part.
Yeah.
I do have a question for Greg.
Yep.
Off of the street, or when they get that done, they're gonna come prior to it and then pipe us each and all, how are we gonna water that?
Right now, we've been using the tanker and the grass truck and we've had people trained on it. Jake is kind of spearheading that and we're just doing the best we can.
We're gonna do water all that, yeah.
Yeah, I, cause otherwise we're gonna have to seed it down later and I don't want it to look.
No, I don't, I mean, I just want to make sure that we're gonna do that. And then when Greg comes over here to do this, you know, I've mentioned before, we cannot get grass to grow right here by the windows and all. Why don't we put some river rock in there, you know, some colorful rock and stuff, put some plastic down first, you know, throw it in there and then they never have to worry about it.
I actually talked about it, the solar panels, I think inhibit it go out of the.
Yeah, so far, I mean, nothing's gonna grow there anyway, so I mean, if we're just looking that way.
Make it look pretty.
Yeah, it makes the path look.
Curious.
More finished, yeah.
I think the whole thing needs to be, the whole, that whole front side, I wouldn't leave any grass there.
Well, you know, right here where the trees are, this is green.
Or, yeah, at least like, yeah, underneath the, underneath the, yeah, we go all the way up to the sidewalk or close to. But, yeah, there is, the grass grows well on the left side, right, right out here, so.
So I mean, that, I mean, that, that's something that you could have them do, cause I mean, I would dig it up, it must be five thousand dollars, so I don't think you have to come up with proof on that.
All right. Yeah, I think it would be.
Yeah, I just got six ton of it, it was a hundred dollars, so.
That would make it look a lot nicer.
I think so, sure, that's a good idea.
I mean, you know, I mean, you got three, three preschool kids that can raise a rock right now, usually. I mean, they're busy, don't get it wrong with.
Not that I'd help, just as my arm gets better.
I can't be raising for that, it's pure as hell.
Um, yeah, anybody else have any questions?
Is that Travis's too? Did you cover Travis's?
Oh, I talked about the pool splash pad.
No.
The fourth of July hours are noon, opening at noon instead of ten.
Still going to eight P M?
Still going to eight, yep. Keep in mind, sometimes if somebody goes by and sees that it's closed, we all communicate for weather or if it's raining. Real heavy in the morning, we won't, may not open it that day, just, just know that they put into it, so.
It's pretty funny, you know, we, we got, I mean, I think we got very nice splash pad and Sol put one in two and I seen three of their guys pull up to ours in the morning. I mean, so we use a lot.
I think it's, a lot of it is the waiting pool.
Yeah.
Like their splash pad is just.
Splash pad.
Ours, ours technically isn't a splash pad, ours is technically a pool.
Ours, ours is probably yes, so that's, that's.
I have a question for you, Jordan. Have you guys got your, whatever you're gonna get?
Certificate, yeah, I'm certified.
Now for, so sour crop days this year, so they could have a great part.
Oh, no, so that's another thing, I guess I probably should have brought that up. You want me to talk about it, Brandon? We've been talking with Jerry Beach about possibly having them, see if they can extend their liquor license over to the park. It would still be rammed by us and we would still pay them, uh, we would still pay for it to be transferred over to the park. And then the other good thing about it is, is potentially, I'm not saying this is a hundred percent, but potentially we could just get the alcohol and stuff from them too. They would just order extra and we would pay them to.
I mean, I understand what you're saying there.
No, I don't.
Well, but, you know, you get your own liquor license, you're gonna need it out here.
Yeah. Well, and we thought about that, but I don't think it really, like, we can get a liquor license for a certain period of time, like a week or whatever, but I don't think it makes sense to get a liquor license right now for a year that we're never gonna, I mean, spend.
Yeah, you can get a five-day liquor license, yeah.
Yeah, we could get a five-day one, which that was the plan and then I think Travis made.
But have you got your corporation, wherever?
All that's on, that's on.
Yeah, that's been done for a while.
Instead of having potentially a thousand dollar bill right up front for this, if it can be covered under the Graham shop of sauerkraut days and served in two locations, which I believe their insurance would allow them to do, they would just have to get a liquor license for a five-day at that location, so it'd be a hundred fifty dollars versus not, you know, a thousand fifty.
They'd be on their own liquor license and, but their insurance would cover that.
It would probably extend over there and it'd still be under the sauerkraut days and they would just run it, is probably how that would be. And since it's a sauerkraut days event anyway, that location should be covered for the insurance already because there's already events over there. So we're trying to save money and not have to, you know, for them to come up with that money right up front, you know, it'd be nice to, just trying to get ideas to save money, I guess. And if it's, if it's legal to do it, we're gonna take advantage of it.
But I'm, I'm just like, you're, you're looking seven, seven weeks.
It's already in the works, it's, we have no one for, this is the second week, you know, so. Sauerkraut days, we gotta, we gotta meet with them to discuss and find some. I know that Jerry, I think at the last meeting was gonna reach out and we talked about their meeting, so I should have some answers by the next meeting.
Okay, no, 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 you're good, Mike. You said there are the trees in the city, how many more trees do we have?
We have fifteen and then we're gonna be ordering probably twenty more and then I just got another community beautification grant application up to fifty-fifty match.
What does that?
Up to five thousand. So, but we still have ten thousand from the Channel C to use as well.
So you will be replacing trees like mine or Dave's and?
Yeah, we got a list, I think there was between Duratio, the Ashmore and the Water Main project, there were over two hundred. So I know that we've probably replaced forty-five and I would say, what, ten of them have probably died roughly?
Yeah.
So.
Doesn't help with the weather.
Just keep plugging line. Some people though, don't want trees. We found that out, one guy pulled it right out of the ground.
Is that on the same property?
No, it is in the right of way.
Make a motion to put a walnut or a fruit tree in ice yard?
I already got two of them coming.
I prefer like a cranapple, a cranapple tree.
Okay, get it with a black lark as well, of course. Come here.
Be careful what you wish for, man, be careful what you wish for, or ask for.
So, yeah, that's a little, we're trying to, we got all the addresses and we have people that call in and we tried to even accommodate their requests for what kind of tree. Some people are very partial to what was there and, you know, they say, well, we'll get it back one way or another.
Well, I do have a question, cause I've got, I've got a tree stump. They just, and Dave, Dave does also.
Yeah, so.
In our yards, are you going to remove those?
Those were, I think your, those two trees were removed like a week ago, right? Or two weeks ago.
Well, they were cut down a week or two.
Right, so they're doing the work, they'll, they'll get out of there. That was, those are two of those trees that were left there hoping we could save and cut, because it took too much of the roots.
When they saw it off at a forty-five, that's, that's when I knew they weren't gonna save it.
Well, right, cause they, at that point, they were already there, didn't they, and they had the.
In the top, three of the trees, the tree was gone.
Yeah, yeah, about twenty feet of the tree was gone.
That's what happened when they saw it down, yeah.
All right, anybody got else for Brandon?
Nope.
Nate?
Um, hold on, proceed first.
Just working on end of fiscal year, start of fiscal year and we got our audit date set for late July, so we'll be working on that.
Plus, we got Marshall back?
We do have Marshall back.
That's good to hear, too.
That's good to hear. I'm sure you're happy about that.
I think all the city workers.
Yeah, I think so, I think so.
I mean, you lose one person out of the.
We all have to pull together and do the job and everything.
Nate?
I just wanna thank all the guys from Brecky and the city for the project. The project's been going very well, I, you know, see it outside my windows very easily and.
been going very well, I, you know, see it outside my windows, um, very easily, and, um, they were working on that, uh, grass today, um, I think that would be a lot part of the line, but that's all looking real good up there, and, uh, yeah, just, it's humming along real nicely. That's it.
Nate?
I would agree, yeah. I think people should be proud of what we're getting accomplished, cause it's a lot getting done in Lisbon right now.
Eric? John?
Uh, I'd just like to ask people to be patient with our Waterme project, it's kind of inconvenience people from time to time, but it will be nice when it's all, that's all I have.
Sarah?
I was gonna say the same, kinda echo what John and Nate said about the Waterme, and first of all, thanks to all the guys and, um, Brandon and everybody who's had a hand in the project, Breckie, um, it's not an easy job, I, I drive past every single day, and I see them working out there, and so I wanna thank all of them for, um, doing it all, and then also, just be patient, I, I know it's an inconvenience sometimes, but at the end of the day, you're traveling to work, you're traveling home, you're gonna get home, it may take you thirty seconds longer, but you're gonna get home, um, or wherever you need to be, so just be patient, and also, um, with the forthcoming, we do have a fireworks ordinance, uh, just be, uh, be aware, and happy fourth of July, everyone. That's all I got.
Thank you, Sarah. Um, I wanna, I'd like to say what everyone else said about the city or the Breckie, everybody else, but I also wanna say, you know, besides, I've lived here over fifty years, um, I've never seen this town torn up like this, you know, you know, Mike said the same thing, I mean, he's, you know, a couple of years older than I am.
Okay.
But, um, you know, also, besides the Waterme project, you have a nice sports complex going in, you have the miners property, you have, there's a lot of things going on in the city, and I want to, I wanna say thank you to the city council members, cause it took a lot of planning for you, and you guys passed and stuff, to make this town what it's gonna be, I mean, but, and overall, between you guys and the city workers and everything, I just, I cannot say how much I appreciate you guys, you people that work here.
Thank you. We, we can't do it without people like you, and, and Becky, and parts of Breckie, their board, and.
Brandon and everybody, everybody.
I mean, it's a very, you know, and we're trying, you know, we're trying to make it our community, a community that you can be proud of, and also one that is home to everybody, you know, you can go to somebody's community that are just huge, and you don't know your next-door neighbor, I mean, so I just wanna say thank you to everybody that's.
We're the town that should be referred to as cheer, where everybody knows your name.
Anybody have anything else?
Whether you want to.